Good evening, welcome to the public hearing and regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, March 25th at 7:00 PM. This time I'd like to call to order the public hearing. Can we have roll call, please?
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Here.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swam.
Here.
Here, four.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Sean will make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
Uh, this is money, I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the public. Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. On tonight's agenda, you'll have some petitions and communications and resolutions about our grant cycle, specifically for projects related to public access to St. Joseph River. For the benefit of the public, it's helpful to kind of revisit where we've come from on this, so that you understand this isn't coming out from left field, but there's been a lot of work put behind this. First of all, envision for Buchanan, there were three goals identified. One is doing what's working downtown and more of it. Two was to concentrate on the North Side neighborhood. Perhaps the neighborhood that's been neglected over the years. We've been engaged in that. And the third goal was to reconnect to our public access properties on the St. Joseph River. We have a strong history of river culture and connections to the river. We know that maybe we, when economic times got tough the last 30 years, perhaps we didn't take care of some of the assets that we had. But now we're a growing city. We have young people moving there, people putting in roots. And this majestic natural resource that is on our border of our city is a great opportunity. And over the last year, we've been involved in this project called the Buchanan-St. Joseph River Front Master Plan. And I have an amazing community steering committee that's worked with us over the last several months. This plan was funded by AEP Power and led by a really talented team at Avon Marsh. So as we proceed down this master plan road, we have a, we're coming up on a draft document. I'll remind you, we've had several public meetings, workshops on this to present, to get feedback from the community, and also to present our findings. And we'll be shortly presenting the master plan to the Plan Commission for their adoption. It's important to point out, the first step we did in this master plan process is we listened. So we had a survey, and it was a robust survey. It was everywhere, it was on Facebook, it was at the library, it was in public places, City Hall. And we asked a series of questions. And one of the telling, couple of the telling questions that we asked was, question was, "Please indicate how strongly you agree with this statement. The city of Buchanan should make efforts to improve connectivity and access to the St. Joseph River and leverage it as an asset of the city and our natural environment." And of the respondents, 80% strongly agree and agree with this statement. Super majority of 80% that want this reconnection to this great natural resource. Second question we asked was, "Would you like to see a new riverfront park and reinvigorate it at accessible St. Joseph River waterfront?" 83.3%, yes. Strongly agree with that statement. Additionally, of the uses that were proposed, include the kayak launch we were just awarded and an improved motorized boat launch. What's, we're here, that's what this hearing tonight is about. Additionally, the second project is for Victory Park Playground Equipment. And we're essentially resubmitting our application for last year. You'll remember, we were funded for the DNR Natural Resources Trust Fund kayak launch. We were not funded for Victory Park. So we have this great application that we're, again, submitting. So I just want to remind the public that, you know, a lot of work has been done to get us to this point. And now we're doing what we're saying we said we'd do. We're going competitively after these monies with strong applications that I think will be seriously considered. But to do that, we need, as required to submit an application, is this public hearing and resolutions approved by the governing body, which is you. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or you can continue the public hearing.
How many people took the survey?
Hundred and sixty-two. Thank you.
I'm just gonna read the announcement or the rules here real quick. "At this time, the City Commission will hear public comments on proposed application for DNR MNRTF Grant Application to Fund the St. Joe River Improvement Projects. All persons wishing to comment shall be given the opportunity to do so. Any person addressing the commission shall do so at the podium, state his or her name, and direct their comments directly to the commission. In the event many people wish to comment, I as presiding officer may determine that each person speaking shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. As the presiding officer, I may terminate any public comments that are unreasonably lengthy, violate the city's rules of procedure for City Commission meetings, or are unrelated to the subject of the public hearing." At this time, is there any public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Rowland, 4793 Tulip Tree Lane. I wanted to just take a quick moment to offer the support, both personally and on behalf of the Board of Trustees of Michigan Gateway, for the submittal of this DNR grant for the St. Joe River Improvement Project. Recently, we had the pleasure to have Rich and Ashley come into our offices and do a lengthy presentation about the project as a whole. And our Board of Directors came away thoroughly impressed. As I've said many times, I probably said it nauseam, our foundation bases our work in three things: education, healthcare, and culture. This is a project that actually encompasses all three. Paired with the North Star Project from an education standpoint, it teaches our public about the importance of the St. Joe River Valley. It talks about things like Moxon Bluff and the history with the Native Americans. It's an important piece of what we do here in Buchanan and our history. That brings us to the culture piece. As our foundation continues to work in the culture piece across South Marion Cass County, one of the themes that we're seeing quite a bit is communities trying to find their identity. And I can tell you now that here in South County, that identity is revolved around the St. Joseph River. We've funded multiple grants, documentary from WNIT, River Improvements of Dua Jack River. Pretty much every community in the area of the St. Joe River is trying to take advantage of this. And I hope that we can start making that our thing, too. When you look at other communities, you know, maybe to the west of us, where, you know, they talk about being close to Lake Michigan. We talk about other communities that are close to, you know, other attractions. Our attraction is the St. Joe River. So this is our option to be able to kind of start that process. Get grant money, get dollars out there. I know as a funding institution here locally, we're open to being one of those partners. And with my conversation with other professionals in the granting field, the takeaway I've gotten is that it's gonna be widely supported as well. And then, you know, from a healthcare standpoint, one of the things our foundation, really any foundation in the area that deals with Council Michigan Foundations, is tasked to do is look through our work through the lens of equity and inclusion. The St. Joseph River is not a friendly place for folks that are handicapped, have special needs, the elderly, really just families looking for a safe place to enjoy waterways. We could take advantage of being the only community in the area that offers that on a safe part of the St. Joseph River. And that allows us as a foundation, if and when we can become funders of a project like this, to hit on all three of our buckets. And I think that's important work. So again, I just wanted to lend my personal support as someone that lives and grew up on this river. I hope other kids can grow up and have the same opportunities that I had. And on behalf of the trustees of Michigan Gateway Community Foundation, we just wanted to offer our support. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Rick Brianski, Niles Township. I didn't come here to talk about this, but I love going kayaking and canoeing on the river. So that's something that I think is a real good draw for you guys. I live in Niles, I spend a lot of time on the Dua Jack River, and I see hundreds of people on the river sometimes, especially during COVID when everybody had to stay home. That was something that we really enjoyed doing. So the more that you can do to give access to handicapped people and the elderly, like he was saying, I don't think about that because I'm able-bodied, but I have an autistic son, and he's kind of afraid to do that. So if you can make it easier for him and people like him, that'd be great. So if it's money from a grant, hey, I say go for it and ask for it, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Norma Ferris, 304 North Oak Street. I am against it. Mother Earth drinks from the St. Joe River. I am a native. And how can you assure me that it's going to be taken care of and it will be clean and the St. Joseph River will not receive trash? You can't.
Thank you, Norma.
Thanks, Norma.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Good afternoon, my name is Juanita Lewis, 809 Ryan Yurison Street, Apartment 5 Buchanan. I rose to say that you all haven't seen me in a while because I've been hospitalized. I've been through so much. But I'm glad to be back because it's like, never give up, keep going no matter what. So that's why you hadn't seen me. And I just want to know from you all, do you all have any listing of any of the realtors that's selling homes or gonna start a subdivision somewhere in Buchanan?
We can get with you during the meeting or after the meeting about that. Rich, right behind you. Mr. Murphy?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Glad to have you back. Anybody else wishing to make a public comment? Okay, if not, some would like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
This is money, I'll move to close the public hearing and public comment.
Thank you, is there support? Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yep. Yes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It is 7:12. We have no recognitions. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Denison.
Here.
Weeden.
Here.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Present.
Swam.
Yeah, are here.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support. Go ahead.
Can we have roll call, please?
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yep.
Harris.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, public comment on agenda items only. However, I believe Mr. Elliott would like to make an announcement, so we're gonna...
Good evening. We talked a couple weeks ago about the AEP building, now the Marion County building. I'm looking forward to coming back, hopefully in about six weeks, with an announcement about that building and the work that's being done on it. I'm not at liberty yet to make the announcement public, but we're expecting some very good news in terms of funding. I also wanted to let you know I am running for reelection to the County Board. I don't know if I will run again after this. This may be the last time. I'll have to wait and see. But I wanted you to be aware of it. I hope that you've been happy with the work I've done, and I'll strive to continue to do good work for our community. Our district now is different than it has been traditionally over the years. This County Board District now goes all the way through Three Oaks Township and includes Galene and Weesaw, and then, of course, Buchanan City, Buchanan Township. But it will be a four-year term this time. Up until now, it's always been two years. But I wanted to make you aware of what my plans are and to tell you I'd be happy to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac.
Thank you, Mac.
Okay, anyone wishing to make a public comment on an agenda item? Please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes. Okay, seeing none, let's move down to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
Sean will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is money, I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with our Community Development Report and Director Rich Murphy.
Thank you again, Commissioners. First item is the item I referenced, is the required resolution and comment period for the Victory Park Playground Project. So we have been very active with our engagement, the City Community Development Department, with the North Side Neighbors. And this project, we did apply for last year. We're not funded, but we feel like we've retooled some items on the application, and we'd like to submit that for playground equipment to Victory Park that would complement all the other great improvements that are being done there now.
Yeah, Sean, can you call for...
Sure. At this time, we'll take any comments of the Recreation Passport Grant Application for Victory Park. Anyone wishing to make a comment?
Jeanne Harris, 320 Bluff Street. I would just like to comment on the grant, Recreation Passport Grant. And this is really going to help Victory Park out a lot. We have a pavilion now, thank you, City Commissioners, for that. And with this grant, we can get playground equipment, we can get handicap accessible playground equipment for the kids. And there are some other things that we want to do. But like I said, we have a pavilion now, and that block is looking really nice. Department of Public Works, thank you, Mike, for all that they've been doing at Victory Park, with the sidewalk, and they've redone the bleachers. So in support of this grant, like I said, it's really going to help to improve Victory Park, to get the playground equipment, drinking fountains, and whatever else we might need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanne.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Okay, anybody want to entertain a motion to recommend?
I'd like to make the motion, but I'm gonna change it up. Since we put so much money into Victory Park and all of our cash, I don't want to agree to 26%. I want Rich to raise 75% of the 26% we have to raise. He's already applied for this grant once, he hasn't asked for any money. We paid 100% cash for the pavilion. So my motion is gonna be to guarantee $12,329 towards this grant, and the remainder of it be raised by Rich Murphy through reaching out to the Lions, the marijuana people, the Gateway program. And that's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor, is there support?
I'll support it for discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good goal that where Dan's going with that. Overall, I do think that would probably make, I'm speculating, but I do think that would make our grant application less competitive because then we have one more thing to prove that we have, one more step, versus if we don't raise it and we don't commit to our funding at that time, if it is awarded, we can always still say no. So I do like the direction Dan's going, and I don't want to hamstring the grant process. I would rather see us approve this as presented and then have Rich keep us up to date. And I think he understands that direction, that we want to have that as a goal.
I don't want to get too derogatory, but I don't think he does. And I, the thing about it is, is I want to go for this grant, I really want to go for this grant. But I don't believe for a second he's gonna try to raise any money outside this because he's had full opportunity. We paid full price for the property. When we could've got away, we'd probably pay him 10. It was a condemned house, you know? And we paid all cash. And have you approached Barb at all with any of this? I doubt it. He wasn't, doesn't want to answer me. So I don't know. I mean, I don't want to vote against this, I'm not gonna vote against this. But I want to, I don't know if there's anything that we can do in the wording, Tim, to guarantee that we light a fire under Mr. Murphy to raise money for this. And I'm talking not a little, not a little butane lighter either, I'm talking about a blowtorch. So, I mean, I understand it, I didn't really want to go into the details. And I understand the grant, you know, it was very explicit in the wording. But I had to say something because we have had a year, and there's been no money raised whatsoever for any of this. It's all cash. So...
Any other comments for discussion? We have a motion on the floor? We have support? Can we have roll call, please?
Denison.
No.
Weeden.
No.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
No.
Swam.
No.
Motion does not carry.
Thank you.
So I'll move to approve a resolution, 2024.0308 Recreational Passport Grant Application as Presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have roll call, please?
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do you want, or do you want to just, we'll just move on, okay? Going down to number two, Consider Resolution 2024.03/09, a resolution to approve the MNRTF Grant Application for the St. Joe River Improvement Project. Someone like to make a motion?
Sean will move to approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Bianski.
Well, I thought we was gonna have some discussion because I would like to...
Oh.
You know, I feel the same way about this one. And the DNR, this is gonna be a tough one because the city of Buchanan does not really do a good job of keeping its word. And the DNR is going to, you know, it's gonna be a tough one. I don't really want to do anything to slow that down. And I have been fighting for these parks, whether anybody believes me or not, since I've been a commissioner the first time around, and got no cooperation. Been thrown off Barb three times because people don't like my delivery. Well, I have a really tough time that there's no money being raised whatsoever. And I just wanted to say, Rich, do you need a different side of my face for a picture? I'll pose different for you. I can.
I'm not taking pictures of you. If you want to see my phone, you can verify.
No, it just looked like you were taking pictures. And I was just gonna pose differently for you.
I'm not sure why you're calling out Mr. Murphy every time you get a chance, but I would recommend that you stop, please. Any more discussion on that motion that is on the floor? Can we have roll call, please?
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yeah.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to item number three, Consider Resolution 2024.03/10, a resolution of support for the redevelopment liquor license for the Sweet Shop Cafe Italiano LLC at 205 East Front Street. Someone like to make a motion?
This is just an updated resolution. The state asked for a more up-to-date resolution that had specific language for Sweet Shop. And so this hopefully will complete their last piece of their application.
But we've done this once before, right?
We have, yeah.
Did it just...
Last year.
We did it, but then we had a, because of the timing lapse, the state asked us to redo the assessor component. And so now they want this component updated with 2024 date.
So is this gonna put a speed up on this, since we've already done it once? Is there anything we can do to speed it up?
I'm told it's the last piece of information the state needs. We've done everything that they've asked for, now we'll see if they get the liquor license.
I'm seeing liquor licenses take like six, nine months in general right now at the liquor commission. It's painfully slow, so... But I'll move to approve Resolution 2024.03/10 as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll, go ahead, Dan.
I'll support.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to new business. Someone like to make a motion to approve the expenditures, and then we'll start a discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
I'll support.
All right, I have some questions. I talked to Tim about all these, I just wanted some of them for the public record. You being a truck driver, $20,000 for repairs on the truck, I would've got wrote up. I got wrote up for a $5 mayor. You know, a $5 mayor, literally, I could show the write-up. So I mean, I'm not trying to pick on these guys, but, you know, there's always been a lot of discussion about having to have drive-through garages because they can't back up. They shouldn't have CDLs if they can't back up. I mean, I worked for JB Hunt, so I took, well, Mark did too. So what was the big, you know, look out, JB can't back up. Well, that's because we were all brand-new drivers. So I mean, I'm just making a strong recommendation that's something, and I mean, we can't really call them volunteers because they get paid. And they do have a CDL, and that CDL is very liquid. I think they have to have an A, don't they?
They don't have to have a CDL.
They don't have to, just air brakes?
They don't have to have anything. They're covered under a special, you know, the Act 300 law. They don't have to have a CDL to drive those trucks.
Really?
Yep.
Well, that's news to me. They do have air brakes, though, right? I mean, the trucks have air brakes.
Yes.
But they don't have to get an air brake endorsement?
No.
Wow. Okay, well...
They have to attend to training. They have to go through a class, through the fire service, but that's it.
What was the repair?
I have no idea.
Okay. You have a CDL, don't you?
Yes, sir.
And then the other one is, Tim, are you aware of that repair? I can't remember, somebody was pumping gas or something?
Was it from a long time ago?
It was from last summer or fall.
During National Mayhem.
Yeah, I remember that.
I mean, I'm not trying to be a, but...
Well, part of the issue was the parts are hard to get for that truck. It's an older truck, and there were some lead time issues and availability.
Well, I'm not worried about repairing it, I understand it happens. But on the other hand, you know, as a driver, as a professional driver, don't your, don't your officers get a write-up if they have an accident? Isn't there an inquiry if a police officer wrecks a car?
We do an investigation, but it depends on the nature of the circumstances and what took place.
But there is protocol to follow. There are steps.
For us, there is.
Okay.
And I believe, if I remember correctly, that the fire department handled this discipline.
Okay. All right, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. The other question I have is, I mean, I get these questions about these budgets. $3,300 for FOIA's, and I talked to Calla earlier. I'm really having a tough time with having to get a lawyer's opinion for a FOIA.
So I pulled the invoice after we spoke today, there was a $25 charge for FOIA on this one.
That's all it was?
Mm-hmm.
So, but the check was for $3,300?
There was five other departments that were... There was five other departments that were charged on different things for attorney fees. But for the FOIA, it was a $25 charge for a 10-minute phone call.
Okay, so that's how that works. And all the phone calls are going through you for the lawyer now, pretty much? I mean, we had a runaway, we had a runaway train here forever.
There were some, there were some issues with the citizen complaints that had to be addressed.
Okay.
And that took quite a bit of legal time.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I'm just asking because, you know, we, this lawyer has a particular reputation for doing the exact same thing in New Buffalo. And they had, he did have, you know, you can sit there and shake your head, but I called New Buffalo and it was the same thing. Everybody and their brother called this lawyer and he just liked to charge, charge, charge. So.
Well, we're trying to improve that and.
I understand that.
This bill was considerably less than the last one.
I know, I know.
Then again, coming out of this, the situation they did it, that makes sense though. Considering, to your point, the floodgates were somewhat open and I don't.
We haven't exactly been seeing it in Kumbaya and here.
No, but I think the same thing happened over there, that multiple things were being asked of them and so they were charging as such.
It was a $600,000 bill over there. Same lawyers.
Do you have?
Nope, that's it, that's it. That's, the only other one I was gonna question is the $5,000 for Southwest. Tim and I talked about it extensively. Dues. I mean, we're paying dues to the Southwest Chamber. Or whatever. And then we pay Chamber dues too. So I just, I just question everything that we spend, that's all. That's it. That's all I got.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. Roll call, please?
Swen?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Beyanski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving, any communications from? Okay, let's go to public comment on non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a mo, or a public comment on a non-agenda item, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. James Busby, 319 Elizabeth Street. I want to piggyback for a minute. I want to go back in time a little bit because I think it's time that everybody knows this story. When we talk about the parks and improvement, I know Mr. Beyanski said he's been for the parks. That may be true, may not be, I really don't know. Doesn't matter at this point. I had a meeting with Bill Marks talking about the park improvements where I was told by Mr. Marks that he had a $20,000 grant for park improvements. I offered to match that out of my own pocket, 20 for 20, which would've been $40,000 to get the parks improved. That never happened. So I don't think it's fair that, Dan, you always call out Rich Murphy when I was making strides six, seven years ago to help get improvements for the park. I also don't think it's fair because Rich and I have had a lot of meetings. I work with a lot of people who donate a lot of money, who want to give Buchanan money through me with my own money and foundation money. When they hear, as I've said before, the nastiness that comes out of your mouth, the insults, that will make it hard for the whole city of Buchanan to benefit from what we're trying to do to improve the city. Over the last three weeks, I've probably had 30 phone calls and 30 text messages from people. Benton Harbor, St. Joe, Stevensville, Nellis, where I do a lot of work at, talking about all the improvements that Buchanan is making. The river project, the parks, everything, Taco Bell. But then we go from a good conversation to stuff that you say, the insults. We cannot do anything, Dan, if you keep insulting people. I'm the type of person, if you say something that's right, that I agree with, I won't insult you. I will come to you and say, Dan, if you and I don't like each other, that's fine. But if you say something that I agree with, I will speak on it. And I will say, Dan, you are right. If I have a disagreement with my brother, I'm not gonna call him an asshole or tell him to kiss my ass like you have done. That's not what we hear in Buchanan. We are better than that. We are much better than that. And when the people in the community see you act like that and call people out and you constantly attack Rich when you don't know what's going on, I've got money right now to help with. I've got other people that want to give Buchanan money. But then they say, Dan, Beyanski, you gotta live with that, buddy.
I, yeah, I'm living with it.
You gotta live with it.
I'm living with it, James.
I know you do. That's all I got to say. Think about, and you know, I'm gonna say one last thing. When you told me you were an old, tough white man and I better watch my back, you need to thank me. Because as I told Tim Gannis and I told Detective Sanders, we have had a lot of white people and black people who want to do you harm. And I've told them, no, we don't do things like that. That's not the Busby way. That's not our way. You need to remember that.
Mr. Your Honor, I want to comment to this. Mr. Busby, you refused to shake my hand at a meeting. And what did you drop? You dropped the N-bomb, sir, in public at the township hall. You dropped the N-bomb. You did. And you can't deny it. And Jeanne was there and she can't say no. She knows you did. So you stand up here and you squawk and you talk about threatening me because I'm keeping money out of this community? If they're that vain, then let them keep their money.
Nobody's threatening you. Nobody's threatening you.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to.
I've got white grandchildren. I've got my rich grandchildren. I would never do that.
Thank you, Mr. Busby. Thank you, Mr. Busby. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
I'm Rob Selvig, 424 Fulton Street. I've lived here for four years and I've never had a criminal record or background prior to moving here. Since moving here, I've had seven accusations of misdemeanors and other crimes. It's kind of unfortunate that every single ordinance in this city is backed up with a misdemeanor and without any civil infraction. And I'm proof of it. I, I lived 47 years without any criminal problems until I moved to Buchanan. Life's supposed to be better here. I mean, it's not for me. I, you know, I'm in therapy now because of this and it's hard for me to function these days because of it.
Hang out after the meeting if you, I would like to talk to you.
All right. That's really all I want to say. I just, I think there should be a lot more civil infractions versus misdemeanor infractions for, like, right now, I'm, I'm in court for playing my drums during the middle of the day on Christmas in the privacy of my own home. I mean, and that's a misdemeanor charge. It doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
I said earlier, my name's Rick Breyer. I'm from Nellis Township. This, the reason I came here is to let everyone know I'm running for Marion County Sheriff. I'm a father of 10. Of course, one of my children died in 2016. But we moved to Marion County in 1994. We raised all of our children here. I, I, we initially moved to Buchanan. And the whole reason why we stayed here is because we really enjoyed Buchanan. We enjoy Marion County. Over the 30 years that I've lived here, I've seen this go from a great place to a live to, now we have a population that's fleeing. And I looked last night, we have 2 percent, 2.7 percent of our population going down, but the rest of the state's going up 1.6 percent. So we need to figure out a way to get people to want to come back and stop dealing with stuff like this guy here just mentioned. So I want to take the Sheriff's Direct, Department in a new direction. I have a platform. If anybody wants to ask me, I got a, I got a hand card over here. I could hand out. So just wanted to let everybody know I'm running for sheriff, Rick Breyer. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Okay. Seeing none, let's move down to executive comments. City manager?
Okay, I have an update on the Hayes Avenue McCoy Creek project. We are meeting tomorrow with Eagle regarding the permitting of that project and its impact on the stream. And I hope in the next week or so, we will have some conceptual drawings and cost opinions on that project as well. So we're moving along on it.
Good.
Do you think, is there gonna be any need for an emergency meeting on that or?
We're, it's our initial meeting tomorrow and they'll let us know their timeline, what the impact may be.
But I, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Didn't you tell me they applied for permits, right? They, they put in permits to do work.
Yeah, Abner Marsh has applied for the permits. And the first step in that is having a meeting with Eagle at the site and that's scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay, good.
Do we need to move that deer before this all goes any further?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's okay.
It's actually sitting on a good foundation.
Well, I know, but if the whole bridge falls out from under.
No, I mean, the brick is, is going down, but
Okay.
the foundation the deer's sitting on is.
Mariah said it's in timeout. I think that's even more hilarious. So we just leave him in there, right?
Somebody put it on there. The deer looks at him every morning when they're going into work. Is that you, Michael?
All right, Commissioner Money?
Okay, well, just once again, I want to thank Tim for all his hard work. I want to thank the staff down here for everything that they do. There's a lot of hard work that goes in. And a lot of people just don't really realize that. I know we are in the process of having a going-away party. So just want to wish her the best of luck. Congratulations on the passport grant. You did a great job. Everything seems to be moving well. Victory Park is gonna be done here pretty quick, hopefully. And we can start utilizing that. And once again, thank you to this group of fine gentlemen for all the hard work that they do. Everybody have a good Easter and see you the next go-around.
Commissioner Beyanski?
I'm not gonna say nothing tonight. Keep my thoughts to myself.
Commissioner Swen?
Yeah, good, best of luck to Jill. I know she's not here tonight, but I want to wish her the best in her, her next opportunity. Always enjoyed Jill. I want to give kudos to the team for our budget session we had recently. We all came in very, with a very serious mindset. We had a lot of good discussion. We didn't solve the world's problems, but we gave the team some good direction, I felt, and I look forward to seeing their takeaways and what next steps look like out of that meeting. Keep up the good work, Rich. I am proud that our name is in the hat for these applications. We're not gonna get them all, but keep, keep taking swings at them. And then happy Easter, like Larry said. Wish everyone the best. That's all I have.
Mr. Whedon?
A little off topic, but relevant to us, I'd just like to say publicly, so it's on the record, congratulations to Brandywine, the state champion for the boys, runners-up for the young ladies. One of the things, the reason it does tie back to us is what I really enjoyed on Facebook over the period of the last couple of weeks is just to see that the herd, individuals within the community of Buchanan, the, the school system, just the outpouring of love and admiration for a program that is a rival, but at the same time is a community of people who are working hard to raise children, to go out there and do the best that they can. And I know that they would do the same for us, so I'd just like to say that publicly, congratulations to them. They are, I really hope the girls are gonna get it so that they could have two of them. But they got runners-up, so next year. So, yeah, that was all. So thank you to everybody in Buchanan for supporting another small community.
Okay. As Commissioner Swen mentioned, we had a goal-setting session. When was that?
Last Tuesday.
The 19th?
Yeah.
There is a whiteboard around here somewhere that's still got all the post-it notes on it. If you want to stick around right after the meeting, you can kind of, you can peruse and you'll be able to tell which goals got the most stickers on it. So you can kind of see the directions we're headed if you want to stick around and look at that. I wanted to announce that Barb is going to be doing an Earth Day cleanup on April 27th from 9:00 to 1:00. That's a Saturday morning in partnership with the Tree Friends and the Friends of the McCoy Creek Trail. We're gonna meet at the comment and then we're gonna disperse to clean up portions of the creek and several different parks. More information will be coming out and there'll be a volunteer form coming out very soon. And also, I wanted to remind you of the Chili Walk, which is April 11th.
Yep, April 11th.
April 11th downtown. Don't miss that. It's always yummy and fun.
This year, we benefit the Tin Shop Theater.
Sweet. What else? I think that's it. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you for coming, everyone.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
Money of support?
Roll call?
Denison?
Yeah.
Whedon?
Yes.
Beyanski?
You?
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Your adjourn. Go shut that off.